Three, two, one.
Good morning. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session for Thursday, January 7th, 2020. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. We also have Vice Chair, Commissioner Gary Edwards, and Commissioners Carolina Mejia, along with our County Manager, Ramiro Chavez, our Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell, and I'm gonna ask the County Manager to introduce our guest for today's briefing.
Yeah, good morning, sir. I think the, yeah, Larry Phillips is here, and Brian Collins is from the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. Thank you and welcome for joining us this morning. Commissioners Larry Phillips sent a letter to you dated December 30th, 2020, and that letter is attached to your agenda this morning. And in that letter, Larry explains the desire of Fish and Wildlife to purchase a land, a piece of land down in Lewis County, in the majority of Lewis County, but it's portions of Thurston County as well. And that is also known as the Trans Alta. It has been in the news as of late. So as part of the requirement, when the Department of Fish and Wildlife is planning to purchase the land, they need to inform the legislative authority and the local jurisdiction as to the purpose and intent of those purchases. And I believe that is the intent of this morning's conversation. Larry and Brian are here to provide additional information related to that.
Who's taking the lead, Larry?
Happy to. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Ramiro. So one of the, so that is the main reason why we wanted to check in this morning. And myself, Larry Phillips, I'm the Regional Director for Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife for our coastal region, Clallum County to Pacific County, and then Pearson Thurston Counties. Also with me is Brian Cockens. Brian is our Wildlife Program Manager that oversees all of our lands and wildlife-related issues for the region. So what I wanted to do briefly is, and certainly we were happy to chat about anything that is department-related, certainly never a lack of things to chat about here in Thurston County, but we have a policy, a Lands 2020 policy that is, it's a clear vision for the management and acquisition and management of lands under the WDFW Authority. And part of that process is obviously working with locals, local elected officials, and the general public on making sure that this is a good fit, making sure that it's consistent with our commitments to conservation, recreation. And those are the primary reasons why WDFW would acquire lands. The policy is available on our website. I'm happy to forward that to you if you'd like some more information on that. And feel free to interrupt me here if you have any questions as we move forward. But the Lands 2020 process is, and this is the very first, very first phase of this. In fact, the general public does not know about this. We haven't, we haven't announced this outside of the agency as of yet. We're still in the process. Nothing's normal, as you well know right now. So we're still in the process of reaching out to some other of the congressional, excuse me, the state legislature, and having those conversations as well.
So Larry, let me, thank you for, just to let you know that we're live streaming this meeting.
Perfect.
Although the public may not be aware of your intent, even as you go through this process, they will.
Absolutely, and we understand that. I just wanted to let the Commissioners know that we haven't got out in front of them. The Lands 2020 process is clear that that is the initial starting places, is the initial outreach, and that is what prompted this meeting and request today. So I appreciate that, Ramiro. And certainly, you know, we understand that this is going to generate probably some interest outside. And that process is quickly approaching us. Brian can help me out, but we have on our commission internal WDFW Commissioners Call, this agenda item is coming up, I believe, in January, toward the end of January, where we will officially announce these potential acquisitions, and they'll go out for public comment shortly after. So this process is, this is essentially the kickoff of this process. So-
Larry?
Yes?
Before I forget, the public comment period is actually scheduled to start next week.
Okay.
And all of the different projects around the state will be posted on our website at that time, including this one.
Great. Thanks, Brian. I knew there's a reason why you were coming with me here. So we're particularly excited about this project, and Brian will offer up the details, but, some of the details, but there's a few reasons why we're particularly excited about this project. This project is extremely unique. There aren't many opportunities for public access or to acquire public access in the quantity and the scale that we're talking about. And we're anticipating about 9,600 acres of, not half and half, probably maybe two fifths of that are in Thurston County, and the remaining portion would be in Lewis County. But the particular reason, and this is much different than any other project that I've been involved with, and to my knowledge that the agency's been involved with, in that there's a landowner here that has been operating, as you know, for many years, an open pit mine. And that mine has lived its life and served its purpose, and now the Trans Alta is moving forward in the reclamation process under the direction of Office of Surface Mines. So it's a really unique opportunity. It's a large piece of land. It's a mosaic of habitats in particular that's currently existing now. Obviously, the land has been altered because of the mine practices. But the objective of today is to introduce the topic to you and offer up another opportunity. We've got a work group that's been meeting regularly that Brian and officials with Trans Alta have been working together on. And they're really the driving technical work group and policy work group as far as how this whole thing is playing out. And as you can imagine, there's a lot going on behind the scenes here. The reclamation process, under normal conditions, would require the mine to restore the habitat to pre-mine conditions. The unique part about that is the pre-mine conditions were, in many instances, monoculture industrial timber, not what we would consider as an agency to be, you know, quality, diverse wildlife habitat. And so this provides us with an opportunity to get involved early on. And again, I just want to remind everybody that we only purchase from willing landowners. So while we have had discussions in the past with Trans Alta about the potential for some acquisitions of pieces or areas of the mine, Trans Alta did reach out to the department and with a desire to potentially partner on this project. So I'm gonna kind of pause there and maybe see if there's questions, but I want to turn it over to Brian here in a minute to kind of maybe talk about the timeline and maybe some of the details that I might have just glossed over there, and just see if there's any initial questions here before we move forward.
Initial questions from Commissioners.
Yes?
Edwards.
Okay. Larry, do you know, is there any potential lease to farm or ag activity that might take place? One of the things we hear about quite a bit is our loss of ag land, and that having to do, a lot of times, with mining, for an example, in this case. So I know it'll be a public purchase, but is there any thought of having any agricultural activity that could benefit, and maybe it'd benefit wildlife at the same time it benefits the farm process?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Commissioner Edwards. I'm gonna ask Brian to respond it out. I know he's been working with the technical work group on that and the economic development groups of both sides of this, so.
Yeah, thanks, Larry. And thank you, Commissioners, for taking the time to chat with us today. A small portion of the footprint of the mine currently is leased by Trans Alta to a local farmer for hay production. I would say that although we haven't gotten down to that level of detail, some of the, some of the things, one of the things that we're looking at in some of the changes to the reclamation plan is to keep some of the landscape and open grasslands. And so I can see where the potential for that might be real. But as I mentioned, we haven't gotten down to that level of detail in the planning yet as to, you know, exactly how things would be managed and what they would be. So hopefully that's helpful.
Okay, thank you. Brian, maybe, since we're on the same topic, maybe you can talk about the IPAT and kind of the parallel conversation that's going on with that to support business, and that would be helpful.
When the mine closed, mine, when being stopped in the mine in 2006, there was a concern about jobs that were gonna be going away. And at that time, Trans Alta, there was, there were three parcels that were set aside that are referred to as the industrial park at Trans Alta. That was a dozen years ago. At this point, one of the parcels has had some very basic infrastructure improvements to it, but the other two, nothing has occurred, and there are currently no tenants in that part. One of those properties sits right in the middle and would be an inholding in the acreage that we would acquire from Trans Alta. And so we've talked to the IPAT Board about whether or not they would be willing to consider an offer from the state. And then on about, it's a 200-acre piece, they're not making a commitment to sell to us, but should we get grant funds and make an offer to them, at that point in time, they would have the opportunity to determine if it was in IPAT's best interest, and also the best interest of the community to sell to us. In other words, they could take that, those funds and use it for another purpose, potentially purchase another piece of property that might be more attractive to development, assumption on my part, or use those funds to develop the other two properties.
Can you, IPAT Board is not something I'm familiar with. What does that mean?
It, yeah, so this, these three properties that make up the industrial park at Trans Alta, when that was set up, there was also a governing board that was set up, that I believe consists primarily of folks from Lewis County. And all three of those parcels are in Lewis County, on the Lewis County side of the line. They, I believe they do have a website that would probably provide a lot more information about the park itself and how it's managed.
Okay, so then, related to this industrial park that you described, just connect, Ramiro, to the, that committee that, there's been one meeting of since I've been Commissioner in Lewis, North Lewis Industrial?
Yes, it is a combination, because I believe the 9,600 acres that this project is included is just a portion of the overall land that Trans Alta is currently holding. Is that correct? Because there is an effort, as Commissioner Mensah stated, the Lewis County is embarking on a major transportation effort to provide access to this industrial area. So I believe it is adjacent to what you're looking for. So I think that that is the case, but correct me if I'm wrong on that one, Larry.
Yeah, Ramiro, I believe that would be a pretty accurate statement. I wasn't aware of the transportation effort, but these IPAT properties are very close to the current steam plant, and I can imagine that that transportation project is looking to serve that general area.
Right.
These 600 acres in question is also not, it's the majority, by far the majority of, but not the entire ownership of Trans Alta in that area.
That's what I was tracking. I know Commissioner Mejia have good questions. No?
No, not at this moment.
So I do have, I do have a question. On the 9,600 acres that you're planning to acquire out of the Trans Alta property, do you know how many acres are within Thurston County?
Brian, you helped me out, but I want to say about two fifths, maybe, less, maybe a little less than that.
Yeah. I'm gonna apologize, because we're still working on getting our map fine-tuned, but this is a rough estimate, and I'm gonna say it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,000 to 2,500 acres.
Okay. I think I want to maybe highlight, just for your awareness, the kind of the uniqueness of this. And because the exciting part for WDFW is because the reclamation process is just, well, at least on a majority of the property, just beginning, WDFW has the opportunity here to kind of drive this process, right? We're working with Trans Alta on what habitat characteristics we would like to see. And our technical staff, Brian's staff, and our fish folks, and are meeting regularly to help define what that might look like. That's one piece of it that's very exciting. And I just want to, I know when I heard about this initially, is, boy, we're potentially taking on an acquisition of a piece of property that was operated as a mine. And, you know, there's obviously lots of history across the nation about the legacy of potential, you know, environmental effects of that. Just want to be clear that we are assuming zero liability. We're making sure that we're working through the, all the details of this to understand what Trans Alta continues to assume as far as liability in terms of any cleanup that's needed, and any, you know, long-term commitments that are associated with the actual mining operation will remain with Trans Alta. And I just wanted to make sure folks understood that, because that was one of the questions I had initially was, was that.
Larry?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Ty?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any kind of a, I don't know, is there a substantial tax shift at all from revenue that the county might be receiving now on that 2,500 acres versus what, and that'll probably go away, but I don't know how much that's gonna be. Do you have any rough ideas on that?
I know that we were having that discussion. We were looking into it, Brian. I don't know if we've got an answer to that. I know Cynthia and our Lands Division was looking at, we knew, we anticipated that as a question.
Yeah, I can, I can help, Larry. Is that, that is a question that we always think about when we're buying a piece of property, is, you know, how do we, how do we inform on what the tax implications might be? This case is somewhat unique at the current time, as I understand it, in that Trans Alta does not pay any property taxes, and that instead the taxes that they pay to the counties are based on revenue receipts at the mine. Obviously, when the steam plant closes, which is not that far off in the future, as I understand it, that's probably likely to change. And so we've been working on trying to determine what, or estimate, I should say, what the property taxes would otherwise be, so that we can address that. And so this is actually a good opportunity for me to, is that counties have the option of opting in to what's referred to as PILT, which stands for payments in lieu of taxes. So in other words, the state makes a payment in lieu of a property tax to counties on lands that like this, that the department owns. At the current time, probably because we don't own a large acreage in Thurston County, and we own almost no acreage in Lewis County, neither county has opted in to that program. That is the county's option, and I wanted to make sure that, that's an important point for today, that I wanted to make sure that we covered. So thank you for that question.
I guess maybe just one more thing from my perspective, if I could. You mentioned a business park, and I know in Tenino, that Tenino property, that same conversation is coming up. Is there gonna be any connection? Are those people coordinating a little bit so we don't have duplication issues that take place? And are you folks still interested in that property or moving forward on that?
I think the answer is yes. I think Brian can share the details with us here, but I think, I mean, I don't think this is incorporated any city limits. I think that's the big difference, maybe with the potential development option that we've, I think you're talking about, Commissioner, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Barnett property?
Yes.
Yeah, so maybe Brian has some more details here, has he?
Yeah, so I think the first part of your question was, is there coordination between IPAT and that business park? And I think the only way I can answer that is, not that I'm aware of. What I do know is that the business park at Tenino is intended to have an agricultural focus. And I don't think that's necessarily the case with the IPAT properties.
Okay.
But, but, but yes, we are still pursuing a process on the Alpaca Farm, as I like to refer to it. It's been, it's been a long and complicated road, but I think at this point in time, it's fair to be for me to say that we have ordered an appraisal, and we're in that process right now. Once we have an appraisal, it's still up to the owner of the property to decide if it's in their best interest to sell to us. So, and I know the county was interested in participating in that project. We're still open to that. But until we have an appraisal, it's hard for us to really figure out how all the pieces fit together with any variety of partners.
Okay, I'll go to County Manager, and then I have a couple of questions, and then Carolina, and then Commissioner Mejia.
I'd like to follow up on Brian's comments related to the PILT. The county receives PILT revenues on a yearly basis. And I believe we have maximized every single opportunity that we have available to the county in the PILT. So we will follow up based on your comment to see if there's any opportunities that we have not banked on. Just want to clarify that, we do receive, we're familiar with the funding, and at least from what I'm sitting, we have maximized all the opportunities, but we'll follow up.
Thank you, Ramiro. I had noted this.
And then there may be PILT, versions of PILT from different agencies. What I was just referring to was WDFW's part, and perhaps I'm wrong on that, Ramiro.
Yeah, we'll follow up, but thank you, Brian.
Ramiro, I'd like to add to that. I know, just, you know, saying this out loud here, our agency continues to work toward, we understand the burden that this puts on the counties. We understand that when we take, when we acquire a piece of property for conservation or recreation, that it does put, have a negative, there's a negative side of that potentially. And we continue to work with the legislature to fund the payment in lieu of taxes program. And I think we've been successful, at least recently, but, you know, we will continue to do that, and we'll continue to try to do our best to minimize the potential negative impact on the counties relative to that loss of tax revenue.
Robin, did you have something there? No, Commissioner Mejia?
My question relates to-
Take that microphone.
Here.
Can you hear Commissioner Mejia?
Can you hear me?
We're hearing her, I think.
Yes, we can.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you. My question relates to basically the process, and what procedurally would be the next steps? When will we get more information? It seems like this project, like you mentioned, is in the beginning phases of it. This is the first phase. So we don't have a lot of the data. You know, we don't have an accurate number of the acreage that's in Thurston County. We don't have the revenue loss that Thurston County would face. So what's next, and when will we get all the facts on this?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. So obviously, this is, again, being, having not participated in a process that potentially would acquire nearly 10,000 acres of land for public access and ownership of the public. This is a complicated process, as you can imagine. The details of the square, the number of acres and the, you know, the dollar amounts, there's another layer of this that we haven't mentioned yet, and that is, part of this property would like, has the potential to come in the way of a donation because of a potential dollar amount savings to Trans Alta associated with the changes of requirement in the reclamation process. Because of the mosaic of lands and the grasslands and requirements or desires of WDFW, there could be potential to be a savings there to Trans Alta. And there are folks and others are doing, you know, looking at that in terms of what it would look like to provide the property in a donation to the agency, at least part of it, versus doing the reclamation process consistent with Office of Surface Mines requirements, and then selling the land to the agency. So there's a lot of details there still to be worked out, and I hesitate to even mention that just because of the lack of clarity right now as moving forward. You know, we are, we would also like to do some projections on the usership, and how many folks we would anticipate using this property. So there likely could be a significant benefit to the county associated with recreation and conservation as well. So we're excited about those opportunities, and I apologize in advance for not having a clear, you know, here's the, I can tell you what the next steps are. The next steps are, we present this information to our commission. We, ultimately, the Director provides staff with advice on how to move forward here, yes or no. And then, at the same time, as Brian mentioned, we go to public comment, and then we continue to work with Trans Alta on the details. Once we kind of zero in on the details of what this path forward would look like, then we would start identifying potential funding sources. I anticipate a huge- I anticipate a huge public involvement and working with counties and, and other elected officials on the path forward here because of the complexity of this. I think, again, unique opportunity because we're in the initial phases of this and because Trans Alta is ultimately responsible for doing the restoration work, we can drive that process. And, you know, part of that'll be, long-term, the development of a, of a wildlife area management plan that will, that will be the, kind of the guiding document essentially on how we'll, we'll use these lands. But I, I don't know if I'm showing my excitement enough here about the opportunity for the people of Thurston County and the state of Washington with a unique property such as this and, and our opportunity to work with a landowner that's got the resources to, to make some land and restoration work that would meet the needs of the state.
Larry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We have a hard stop at 9:30.
Okay.
My question's related to some of the reclamation process. So I'm just gonna jettison those because it sounds like those are still being ironed out and we can talk about that at future times. So I really appreciate you guys' time. This is, this is very interesting to me and sounds like a really good opportunity to move forward on. Ramiro, anything we need to say or do to wrap this?
No, I echo your, your, your comments. Thank you very much for joining us. And Larry and I will have a conversation as to when will be the right time to come back to the Board and give another update on the process and the progress of this acquisition.
I appreciate the time, Commissioners. If there's ever any additional questions, I'm easy to reach. Ramiro has my contact information about this or any other WDFW-related activities. So appreciate your time today and welcome, new Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.